Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the agents. Pleasure, the agents.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Under community development, I'm going to move item B to item A, and item A to item B. Staff, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Anything else? Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's almost second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Next, the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On consent agenda for this evening for council's approval are the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes on May 13th, Planning Commission minutes on May 1st, application for temporary appointment to the Airport Commission of Dan Weegstedt, accounts payable report May 2nd through May 15th. For council's acceptance, the Wilmer Lake area CVB board minutes of April 16th, information, City Hall Task Force meeting summary of April 23rd, and the Invest in Wilmer Board meeting summary of April 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. I just have one question. There's no City Council minutes on here. Is there a reason why they're not on here?
I was out of the office that week, and I -- my substitute did not have them completed. And when I returned last week, I had the city auction to prepare for. So they will be in the next packet.
Councilmember Osmus.
Can I pull D?
Certainly. Anything else? Motion made and seconded to approve all items with the exception of D. David. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Osmus.
On the accounts payable, there was a number of expenditures to the artists, and I'm sure that's part of the grant for downtown. Is there any kind of an update of where that money's going to, or where we're at with that?
I haven't been given an update. I don't know, is Ms. Swett here?
I could -- is Sarah here? She's not. I can speak briefly to that, that several of them have applied, you know, for money to do their projects. And she has, I want to say about three to five people engaged for the downtown. And we drafted a document that I reviewed that anything that they create could be retained ownership by the city, since we're commissioning some of these pieces of art.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if they had been finished, and I thought, am I not seeing these someplace that we were paying for them?
No, they're not finished yet, but this is helping to pay for some of the materials.
Okay. Then I move that be approved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. I'm assuming that the city attorney has reviewed the document? Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have a mayoral proclamation. And as a lot of you know, Mr. Tom Cornio has been a longtime resident. I was kind of hoping Tom was going to be here tonight, so I could talk to him about trying to burn down Bremer Bank. But he and I were cooking brats there one time, and the fire got a little out of control, if you will. And so I always like to tell that story when I talk about Tom Cornio. But so I have a proclamation proclaiming May 21st as Tom Cornio Day in Wilmer, Minnesota. Whereas Tom Cornio was born and raised in Wilmer and grew up in the insurance business, learning from his father Vern, who started the Cornio Agency in 1942. Tom was an active member in the community and school, including being a sports writer for the West Central Tribune. Tom attended Bethel College, earned a degree in education, and taught for 10 years in Roseville before returning back to Wilmer in 1977 to try out the family business with his father, who he worked diligently beside until Vern retired and Tom took over the business with his partners. Cornio Elker has been a trusted business in Wilmer for over 75 years. While the business sold in 2016, Tom has continued to stay on and worked with his last day being May 17, 2019. And whereas Tom Cornio became involved in many activities in the Wilmer community throughout the years, to include the Chamber of Commerce, Kiwanis, United Way, and a leader at Refuge Church. And whereas the citizens of Wilmer are grateful to Tom Cornio for his hard work, leadership in the community, and his service to local organizations, and therefore be it resolved that I, Marv Calvin, Mayor of the City of Wilmer, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 21, 2019, as Tom Cornio Day in the City of Wilmer, Minnesota. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Wilmer this 20th day of May, 2019, and my signature is attached. So let's give a round of applause to Mr. Tom Cornio. Okay, with that, then we'll go to open forum. Sarah Sitzma.
Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sarah Sitzma, and I'm here on behalf of the American Federation of State Municipal and County Employees Union, Local 559. Specifically, I'm speaking on behalf of the City of Wilmer General Unit and Public Works Department. As we are all well aware, the comparable worth study that we've waited years on, even decades, was finally made public just a couple of weeks ago. That report analyzed 32 City of Wilmer positions in comparison with 15 other similar municipalities. The result of a wage-to-wage comparison show that the City of Wilmer public employees are paid far below their market value. In fact, many of these positions, on average, are 20 to more than 30 percent below what other towns pay public workers for the same or similar types of work. The public employees we're talking about are not just numbers on a page. They're the public works operators who work many nights and weekends to clear ice and snow off roads and parking lots during the winter, protecting our residents from potential industry due to inclement weather. They're the wastewater treatment plant operators who work long hours during rainstorms to monitor lift stations and prevent sewer backups from becoming an issue for our residents. They're the mechanics that keep the trucks moving, the custodians and maintenance personnel that keep our city running on a day-to-day basis. The engineering staff who get called in to do emergency locates, fix flashing traffic signals, and put out the public notices for snow emergencies, all to serve our residents. And of course, all of this would not be possible without the assistance of our front office membership, who put in long hours to ensure that administrative duties are completed efficiently and accurately. During the last Labor Committee meeting, a member spoke of raising supervisors and department head pay for a second time, while general unit and public works employees have yet to receive a single pay increase, because, they said, the city was in a vulnerable position. To clarify, supervisors and department head pay is within the 5 percent threshold, which determines wage competitiveness in a market. Who is really vulnerable? Are all the other employees who are paid 30 percent below market or more. With low wages, candidates for city positions will have less experience and less education, or they won't apply for the position at all. This leaves departments shorthanded, or with those who must be trained on the job at the expense of other tasks being completed. Those that are left vulnerable are not supervisors or department heads. It's the residents, taxpayers, and voters in the City of Wilmer. I'm here today to request that the City Council not postpone this vitally important issue by punting it into 2020 or 2021, and that they do something for the general unit and public works employees now, by opening negotiations for a temporary MOU before giving a second raise to management. We can't wait another decade or two. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Sitzma, could you just mention if you reside within Wilmer, outside of Wilmer, please?
I reside outside of Wilmer.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next, Mr. Steven Schmidt. And please advise if you live in town or out of town, please.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Steven Schmidt. I'm with the, with AFSMI Council 65. I am the new labor rep assigned to this area. I currently reside in Spicer, but I have plans to move into Wilmer as soon as possible. We're here to talk about the comparable worth study that was issued just a couple of weeks ago. This study's been a long time in the making. I've heard 10, 20 years or so. And so it's not surprising, whenever you look at the wages and how they're so far below market, right? It's because the raises haven't been, haven't kept up with that. And, you know, we have to just kind of look at what the data says. This was an independent consultant that the City Council hired, and it clearly says that the rates and the wages are below market. It varies depending on what job position that you're looking at. It goes, you know, as little as 5 or 6 percent. For some positions, it's upwards of 60 or 70 percent. And that report is, the first page of it, the option A that you're talking about on the agenda, is wages to wages. When you compare the wages of the City of Wilmer public employees, the general unit and public works, to other cities that are around here that are comparable size and budgets, it's far below, right? At the Labor Committee meeting, what we heard was that we're going to come up with some different options, options B and C. Options B and C try to take into account the health insurance contribution and the HSA contributions, and to basically negotiate down the differences in wages. And I just have a question, and maybe y'all can answer this for me now. But when they did that study, did they take into account the value of the other cities' health insurance contributions or the other cities' HSA contributions? And is it really an apples-to-apples comparison in options B and C? Because the way that I read this report, it's not. We need to be looking at option A. Again, just like Sarah mentioned, the supervisors and department heads have already had one increase. Now we're looking at another second increase before the general unit and public works have even had one increase. This, I think, sends a message to the workers that we represent. It sends a message to the residents about the type of public services that they deserve. The membership and the employees here deserve dignity and respect. They deserve fair wages. And that's what we're here to ask for today. On the agenda is to consider moving this discussion to a mini-retreat on July 29th. I'm not sure if that mini-retreat is open to the public, but I think that something like this should happen at the full City Council meeting. I don't think we need to kick the can down the road any longer. It's been years in the coming. We've been waiting on this report for a long time. And the way that the timing's happening, right now, we have a chance to do something, right? We maybe can't do all of it all at once, but we have a chance right now in the budget.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Community Development Committee report. We'll start with item B, if you'd be so inclined. Councilmember Fagerly.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Monday, May 13th, at 5:15. Item four was the airport runway. 1331 Taxiway A and West Taxi Lanes Payment Rehab Project. Jared Vogel from Bolton &amp; Mink was present to discuss the 1331 project Taxiway A and the West Taxi Lanes. Were originally constructed in 2007. Since that time, no substantial pavement rehab has been completed. In order to preserve the pavement, crack repair and seal coating has been recommended. City staff, along with Bolton &amp; Mink, met with the FAA officials to review the project and request federal discretionary funding for the project on November 20th, 2018. The City Council of Wilmer approved a resolution on December 17th, 2018, to enter into a work order number two with Bolton &amp; Mink for professional service contract for airport design, bidding, and construction administration services. Runway 1331 and runway 321 will be closed during certain periods of the construction. Construction phasing plan has been developed to minimize the closure period and disruptions to pilots. During any runway disclosure, LifeLink 3 will still be allowed to operate. Total estimated cost of the project is $980,750. which is split 90 percent federal, 5 percent state, and 5 percent local. Estimated City of Wilmer cost for the project is $48,887.53. This money is allocated in the CIP. There was a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the plans and specs and order advertisements for the bids. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to advertise, to approve the plans and specs and order advertising for the bids. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Typically, this goes to finance or public works, but it came to us, and hopefully, we do have the money to pay for it, if our finance director can tell us that.
Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would defer to the consulting engineers and Mr. Ramstead, who would have looked at that when they presented the information. But I believe it was budgeted in 2019 capital improvement.
Mr. Vogel, is that in the budget? Mr. Rundigan. Mr. Rundigan, can you tell us what the budget is for that amount?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. It was included in the current CIP that the City of Wilmer approved under 2019. And so it is, it is in the budget for this project. In order to be a part of the federal, in order to be approved as a federal project, it has to first be included. Actually, the city has to encumber the funds first before the federal government will do their portion.
I just wanted to make sure it was still there.
Good point.
Absolutely.
And I believe, did the Airport Commission talk about this on Wednesday night? Mr. Plowman, Chairman of, or Advisory?
Plowman.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, unfortunately, because of a conflict with public works meeting, I was unable to attend on Wednesday. But the previous Airport Commission meeting, we did meet, and it was discussed. Silas was there, who's our consulting engineer from Bolton &amp; Mink, very knowledgeable of the process, all of the projects, including the overall master plan, airport master plan. Very knowledgeable in working with both our local airport onsite people, as well as the FAA and Minn dot aeronautical. They seem to have the project very well organized and laid out, and budgets and everything seem to be in order.
And for the record, we did, at the Airport Commission meeting, a motion made by David Little and seconded by Rick Ketcher and passed unanimously on this exact resolution, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just looked at the CIP. It looks that it was in here for $46,000. If I can read right, 46, airport runway and taxi lane rehab construction.
I believe that the number changed just slightly as we looked at some of the west taxi lanes in the Tea Hanger area, where the city owns Tea Hangers. That ground is very saturated and has moved a lot since the airport was built. And per evaluation of that pavement, Bolton &amp; Mink is recommending some full-depth reclamation in that taxi lane area, rather than just the seal coat and repair. And so we ended up with a slightly different total number. I believe about $20,000 difference. And then, as we go through that breakdown, it ends up being a couple thousand dollars different to the city.
So we got to change order already? Do we have the funds to pay for the extra money? We can find the funds?
Mr. City Minister Holland, was this talked about at staff meeting at all? And were you going to come up with the extra dollars?
We didn't talk about it at the staff meeting, but I know that we can find the funds. And I have talked to Eric about the reclamation and the problems out there with the flooding, so it should be a go.
And yeah, just, Mr. Vogel, you reminded me as well. These are estimated costs. Of course, once we get the bids, we'll have actual, actual dollar amounts put with those.
We have a motion, so.
Yeah, I'm just seeing if anybody has any questions. I mean, we're going to have to find the money someplace.
We'll have to wait till the bids.
Councilmember Plowman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was just, I was going to inquire about the process. Once the bids come back, is the project already pre-approved then? Or does it come back through public works?
It will come back through public works, correct.
Okay, so then I assume we will discuss it with our city engineer at public works. A recommendation will be made and forwarded to the council at that time.
I would recommend that we also have it on the Finance Committee, too, so the Finance Committee can identify the funding source if needed.
If necessary, yes.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and one other thing, I guess you left. I'd asked the manager, Eric, the status of the leased land. It says in here, Tea Hanger. But I was told by our finance director that the leases were paid in February upfront, because we had a couple of people that leased land and filed bankruptcy, so we did not receive payment for the land. And the other thing was, one of the renters, Justin Boyk, who's the majority of the A-Gland leasee. We might have to rearrange or update his lease because of the Y project. It's going to be taking some of his land. We'll find that out later on. And the item that we passed over was the flood insurance rate map. Doug Fenster, a local realtor, was present to discuss the need for flood insurance rate map due to a property that is being purchased on Country Club Drive. The new FEMA lines modified in 2015 outline that property, and it's in a flood plain. Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac would not allow financing within a municipality that is not a participant within the flood insurance program. Wilmer is not a member of that program. There are eight to nine other properties that will also be impacted by this. Doug is requesting that the city participate in the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. There was discussion, and we asked questions about the FEMA map and the need for flood insurance. Director Ramstead, or Community Development Director, informed the committee that there would be a small cost to the city in adopting the flood insurance program and administering flood-proof construction by the building officials. Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, voiced his concern about participating in the program. Federally-backed loan wouldn't be allowed without a federally-backed program that they have drawn for the flood plain. That doesn't do anything for the conventional loans or other types of buying-selling homes. Mr. Christensen feels that this could be an unnecessary burden to property owners. After lengthy discussion, the committee is asking staff to clarify any discrepancies on what the financing insurance is available and determine if Wilmer would be eligible for federal grants when there is a national disaster. Committee also requested that Candy High County Emergency Management Service Director, Kim Lindo, attend the meeting. And we do have a DNR representative, Ethan Jensen. And welcome.
Thank you.
And if you could come up and talk about this, because Wilmer's never participated in this.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for inviting me to the meeting tonight. Once again, my name is Ethan Jensen. I'm a hydrologist with the Department of Natural Resources in Spicer. I guess I really would like to, I was able to read through the city minutes or the information that was put together from the last discussion. And I'd like to, you know, open up some time for any questions that may be provided. But first and foremost, I guess I would like to voice my support for a program like this. It is a program that has been adopted by many other communities, both county and municipality level throughout the state, and does provide for a means for flood-related relief and insurance to impacted communities and individual owners. One thing I would like to make clear, at least at the beginning, is flood insurance is possible without enrollment in the NFIP, but there are, it has to go through a private lender. The federally-backed lenders do require participation in the flood insurance program. However, those not in a flood plain, a mapped flood plain, as you saw at the last meeting, are not specifically required to get flood insurance unless they have a mortgage through one of those federally insured lenders. One thing I would like to make clear is that those not in a FEMA mapped flood plain can also get program, or get insurance through these programs as well. I mean, as we well know, from the last several years at least, many of the heavy rains and the floods that we get don't always stick to the lines on the map. So this would provide an opportunity for landowners not in a mapped high-risk area to get what's called a preferred risk policy, which is a flood insurance policy at a lower rate through national flood insurance program providers. So without wanting to go too in-depth in the program, because it's, it's very broad and it's also somewhat complex, I'd like to ask if there are any specific questions along these lines.
So who would be protected if they bought this insurance? You have to be on a lake typically, and lakes usually don't flood.
Well, within the City of Wilmer, the primary flood plain areas are those immediately around the lakes.
Yes.
For instance, in other communities, about four years ago, the City of Raymond went through enrollment in the National Flood Insurance Program. And of course, that has the main Simpahawk Creek that runs right through it. In a downstream area, there are more landowners that are impacted by backwater flooding in that area, as well as, I believe, did I say Raymond? We went through it with Maynard as well. And other communities in the area along these high-risk areas are enrolled in the program. So I guess to answer your question, the only ones that would be required to get flood insurance would be those who are seeking a loan through a federally-backed insurer, like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, someone that's FDIC insured, in which case, they do require that if the owner is in a mapped flood plain, they would get insurance. That would be the only individuals that would be specifically required to get that. And once again, that's as part of a loan or something on those lines. Those who don't have an active loan wouldn't be required to enroll into the program. It's, it's an opt-in type program.
But what about people that lived on Candy High? Have nobody?
Tenth and Candy?
Yeah, Tenth and Candy. Their house was destroyed. They're not at a creek, they're not on a river, they're not on the lake. And they get flood insurance through the federal program?
They can, they can. When a community's enrolled in the National Flood Insurance Program, there's a number of areas laid out as part of the flood insurance maps. There's the high-risk areas, those considered to be within a 100-year flood plain. There's moderate-risk areas, those areas that are indicated on the flood maps to be areas where we have significant ponding. And then there's low-risk areas, which are pretty much everything else on the map that's not outlined with one of our, one of the polygons where we expect the 100-year or the 1 percent chance flood event to come. Anyone can enroll in that. And it's, once again, if you're in one of those low-risk areas, they have a preferred risk policy. And I have a couple of numbers. But for that specific question, I guess I'd like to put the city in contact with our state flood plain manager, our flood, excuse me, flood plain manager of our program, and that's Seal Strauss. She has former experience with the actual specific costs of those types of things. The numbers that she provided to me are approximately $200 a year for a $20,000 structure, and $8,000 in contents, and approximately $600 a year for a $250,000 structure with $25,000 in content. So it is, it is a policy that would be available to all those within the city in those low-risk areas. Now, I can't ensure that those numbers will be consistent or anything like that. But once the city would become enrolled in the program, those policies would be available through National Flood Plain Insurance Program insurers.
How about people that live along the ditch by Valley Golf? The New Dairy Queen on East Highway?
That would be something I'd have to take a specific look at the map for individual structures. I guess I'm not familiar down to a street-by-street or structure-by-structure level as to who would be included and what exactly their rating would be, medium risk, high risk, whatever. But they would be eligible. I mean, essentially, everyone that's in the program, if the city's in the program, all residents would be eligible. The figures that I've been provided indicate that 55 to 60% of those that receive flood insurance or have flood insurance policies in the state are not in high-risk areas. They're in the moderate-to-low-risk areas. So, once again, it's not a mandatory policy for those that are in these areas, but certainly flood insurance does cover far more than a standard homeowner's policy for something like that. So all counties in Minnesota do have, they're all, they are enrolled in the National Flood Insurance Program. Enrollment on a county level, for those inside the municipality boundaries, doesn't specifically posit inclusion. I mean, you have to be enrolled as a municipality to have that policy active within the city boundaries. So I could take a look at individual structures along the line and provide some guidance as to what risk category they would fall into, but I'd have to take a closer look at the maps to do so.
Okay. And you really want flood insurance for a catastrophe that wipes out the entire house? Because otherwise, flood insurance is just pro-rated. If you get water in the basement up five, six inches, it's pro-rated, then they just cut out the sheet rock or paneling?
There are certain things that are, that are covered by flood insurance that wouldn't otherwise be covered under your homeowner's policy. And I can't specifically speak to if it would necessitate a catastrophe, like a disaster declaration, the city or anything like that. I do believe it's assessed on a property-by-property type basis, and the individual pundits of the policy would really be up to the lender. I can try and find some more specific information on what would be covered along those lines. I do know that for the majority of flood insurance policies, unless you have a contents policy added, it does cover predominantly the major appliances, a water heater, furnace, those types of things that may be in a lower floor level. But I do believe a contents policy would be necessary, which is another small rider for, like drywall and those types of things. But I would have to go back and provide more information along those lines.
Any other questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just a little bit confused, so for just clarification purposes, obviously, for these policies, should Wilmer qualify for such policies? The policy cost is to the homeowner. In terms of enrolling the city or the city being on the, a part of the actual program, what, I mean, when they say there are costs to the city, what do those costs entail? And who is encumbered by those costs? Who pays the overarching costs, if any?
There are some small fees associated with enrollment in the program. Predominantly, those costs are administrative. Once the city's enrolled in the program, there's no financial burden for continuing participation or anything like that. It's really just the administrative costs to get the program policies going. Like, there is an application process that the city goes through. There is maintenance of an ordinance document and those types of things. But by and large, those costs would be administrative. The costs would have to be borne by the applicant for enrollment in the program. I don't have a specific figure for the costs. Most of the time, I believe the costs run in the nature of several hundred to maybe $1,000 just to get the administrative work moving forward. But I can provide more information to the council in regard to the specific costs.
May I follow up to that?
Sure.
Okay, then with that said, other property owners and other insurance policies, if, if the city qualifies for the program and is designated a city that allows people to take advantage of these programs, does it affect other homeowners' insurance policies in any way that the city has that designation or the ability to enroll in those policies?
The only owners that it would specifically affect would be those within what we consider the mapped high-risk areas, should they be willing to or needing to take out a loan or a mortgage for any improvements or anything like that. Those in the low-risk areas, when everything is enrolled, there should not be any mandatory hikes in insurance. There shouldn't be any issues that would be associated with the fact that the municipality has adopted the plan or anything like that. It's simply an option to provide in enrolling an additional policy should they so choose. It's really kind of an opt-in, an optional program. So there shouldn't be any additional cost or change in any insurance simply because the city just enrolled in the program.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
So I just have a question. So Wilmer's population is about 19,600 people. How many similar communities our size do not participate in the flood insurance program that you may be aware of?
That's a great question, and I don't have a number off the top of my head. I do know that most of the communities that we talk about enrolling on a regular basis are those that are along the Mainstem River or are experiencing multiple successive high-water flow events and those types of things. As, it was noted earlier, lakes typically have less overall bounce in water level than rivers do. And Candy High County, particularly the Wilmer Lakes area, is situated in what we consider a headwaters watershed. You don't have a lot of watershed area upstream that's contributing significant flows. That being said, you know, we have experienced a significant increase in the number of large precipitation events. And that's independent of how much watershed area we have. I would really have to go back into our program as per our administrator to see how many individual communities the size of Wilmer don't participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. But specifically, so far this spring, in regards to the high-water flooding, I've worked with the cities of Granite Falls, Montevideo, and all my counterparts have worked with, like, Redwood Falls, other larger communities farther to the east as well, Delano, that would maybe not quite be on the same type of scale in regards to Wilmer in terms of population. But there are other major communities in our area that are participating in the programs because of, and they're early enrollers because of the nature of the water resources in those areas. They're all situated on large rivers. So to answer your question specifically, Mayor, I would have to go back to our program director to see exactly how many communities the size of Wilmer are enrolled or otherwise.
Oh, and then just one other follow-up question. So, and I think I heard this correctly, but this has been something that we've been, when it's come to this table before for us to discuss, and we've been told that if we enroll, then everybody has to enroll. But if you're in the floodplain, you have to purchase it if you're buying this insurance or this loan. But if you don't, then, I mean, it's totally optional if somebody buys the insurance or not. Did I hear you say that correctly?
Yes, if you're not in the high-risk area and you're not taking out a new loan, then, as noted earlier, if most of the insurers who are federally backed or have a federal entity that's buying the loan, if you're getting a new mortgage or a new loan and you're in a high-risk area in a mapped floodplain, many of them do require floodplain insurance. But by and large, like we said, in the city of Wilmer, there, the majority of structures are not in those high-risk areas. In those cases, floodplain insurance would not be required or anything along those lines. If I could, if I could be candid, really, the way that I see a program like this is we have a lot of individuals that are impacted, not frequently, but on an occasional basis by extreme high-water events. And not necessarily always those that are on a lake or a river or something else. And when they have optional or an optional policy available, I mean, there are many of them. You know, I myself live in the city of Litchfield, and I don't have a policy. You know, it's just, it's personal preference, but many people have the option. And the more I see the changes in our precipitation events, the more I see the size and increasing frequency of those precipitation events, the more I'm encouraging our local communities to enroll in the program. Once again, there isn't any obligation to those not in those high-risk areas. There's a very small financial obligation on the part of the city. We, as DNR staff, do our best to work with the local communities in not just enforcement of any floodplain regulation, but also with questions. I'm just a little ways up the road, so if there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them along those lines.
John?
I like homeowner choice. And I think you've addressed that. So if I take away choice, what I'm dealing with is, it sounds like I've got about 10 homes that are in a high, the high-risk area, and only those that would, now, if I've already purchased my home, but I have done it through a federal program, my mortgage is that way, will I be required, if we're on the program, to change my provider and add this flood insurance as an option? I mean, if I own my own home outright, I understand I don't need to do that.
Mm-hmm.
But I know of new people coming in, I understand that's what precipitated the whole conversation again this time. But if I have a mortgage, that is a federal mortgage, and I'm currently defined as one of these 10 in the flood zone, will I now have to get insurance?
That's a great question, and the only way we'd really be able to determine that would be to talk to the lender. You know, in these cases, the maps were updated, as noted earlier, in 2015. That information's public information, and many times lenders do take a closer look at that. Along those lines, I don't want to give you the impression that the maps are absolutely final as well. There are ways to both amend and otherwise change the maps on individual property. So to answer your question directly, we'd have to talk to the individual lender to determine how they would handle a situation like that. With regards to, if I can bring apart, bring about a recent situation around Green Lake near Spicer, there is a significant area that's mapped as high-risk on the east side of the lake. As a portion of floodplain insurance, the program and the policy of the county, those new builders there are required to elevate their property, their home, to a certain elevation to get out of that floodplain. Once they bring in that extra material to bring that home out of the floodplain to a certain elevation, then their lender can work with them on a letter of map amendment to say that, yep, we've got, we're above this elevation. We no longer need flood insurance, and it's something that we can work with the property owners on. So I can't specifically say that if you have an existing mortgage and the city were to enroll, that the lender would then change their policy personally. And my experience, it appears as though if a lender has a concern like that, it's likely something that has been applied already. But once again, I can't speak in generalities too often, because there's always an exception to the rule.
Right, and I was actually, the follow-up, I was going to ask you, how do, if I am in that situation, what's the definition of how you get into that floodplain? How is it defined, and what modifications do I have to make? But you probably are, it's going to depend on what the map is. But I mean, these 10 homes may have to raise it a certain amount.
If, yeah, to describe in generalities, when it comes to like a basin, typically, the hundred-year flood event is not described as just a line that goes out to a certain extent, it's an elevation. So based on a response to a certain rainfall event that we consider the 1% chance is defined on a national scale, there's an elevation that's applied to the lake, saying, okay, at this elevation, this is what we expect the lake to get to in one of those 1% chance events. And in those cases, we try and provide that elevation to the homeowners to be able to, okay, the basic is to try and get that, that home up to an elevation so as you're not in that, that mapped floodplain. And as you noted, there are relatively few structures in the city that this would specifically apply to. However, in the case of, these are all along the lakes, you know, so we'd be able to provide that specific information as per an elevation to assist those landowners.
Audrey?
So when the map was updated in 2015, did it expand the number of properties in Wilmer that are now in the floodplain? Or what changed that, what has changed that has brought it, brought us to this, to today, that it is now a problem?
I guess I don't quite understand if you'd be willing to clarify that it would be a problem.
So if I understand correctly, there, a home that's up for sale, that lenders will not make those loans because it is listed in a floodplain and we have not adopted it. But my question was, is the floodplain in 2015, do we now have, do we have more water issues? Do we have more parcels that are actually in the floodplain? Or was that number there before, and we just weren't aware of it?
I believe that in this case, the previous floodplain maps were adopted in the early 80s. And our mapping techniques were slightly less refined and defined in the early 80s than they are now. To speak directly to your question, I don't know if there are more properties or otherwise. In this case, the map process involved a county-wide update that began in 2013 with the maps being approved in 2015. I believe that in some cases, because the new maps did take into account a slightly different calculation with regards to precipitation. You know, we have an updated, I guess you could call it a guide to what we anticipate a specific large event to be. Because our events are changing, we work with the National Oceanic Administration, and Airdonic Administration, NOA, to revise our precipitation estimates. So that may have accounted for a slight change in these areas. It may also just have been that the homes around the lake weren't for sale at that time. Or otherwise, that the lenders determined that, oh, you know, in the Wilmer area, we never considered it before, and now it's, it's an area that is considered an update. I guess I don't have a very specific answer to your question, and I apologize for that because I don't know the specific structure in question.
I just wondered if the lender's rules had changed or requirements had changed in addition to the map being updated, too?
It's, it's, I guess my assessment of the situation, I think more lenders are sensitive to those situations just because we're having larger numbers of these big precipitation events. But I don't know specifically in this case.
Any other questions? Julie?
If I could make just one additional statement, I do know that the maps that we have nowadays, they were updated with the most up-to-date elevation information. These maps were updated using the statewide LiDAR information, which is basically laser light-applied detection of elevation on the land surface. So these should be far more accurate than the 1980s maps.
Julie?
Okay, mine is similar to Councilmember Nelson's in that I find it odd that these nine or 10 structures are not the ones who have had water problems in the city, but they're the ones who are identified in the high-risk area in an area that doesn't flood by the lake. So in 2015, when they were put into this high-risk area, was there any way that they could grieve that or fight that, that declaration or determination from the mapping?
The FEMA process does allow for amendments to the maps based on elevation. And many times, these, you know, similar situations in Candy High County, there are several individuals who are well above a floodplain by a matter of, you know, several dozen feet. And because of either errors in mapping or areas where LiDAR was difficult because of LeFond conditions, they have had to go through letters of map amendment. And that's something that our statewide floodplain program does assist with. You know, really, what that would require is survey information with respect to the hundred-year floodplain elevation and whatnot. And I guess I want to be very specific and say that the maps are the best that we can provide with the information available in terms of elevation. If there's more specific information, as per like a property survey or anything like that, something that can always be considered and work through the map amendment process. Before the, the obtaining of a letter of map amendment to have that survey would be essentially the only cost. There's not a cost to amend the maps, and we certainly work through that with property owners who have those concerns. In specific to the maps themselves, they were, they went through many iterations on a county-wide level, and there was an opportunity to review that information and otherwise make your concerns known. We had a number of public meetings and whatnot. And certainly, we understand that not everyone's able to make those meetings. And that's why we want to make sure that the maps themselves are publicly available. But on a property-by-properity scale, we can still work to amend them with better information.
So, Mr. Jensen, if we approve this and join the program, can we unenroll at a later date if it's not working out for the resident?
That's a great question. And with regards to this program, many times what we see is the municipality, excuse me, a municipality will get enrolled, and then there will be very little to no action for a long time. I mean, the maintenance, of the ordinance doesn't specifically require a lot of care or anything like that. With regards to un-enrolling in the plan, I mean, the enrollment in the National Flood Insurance Program is like any other local ordinance. You know, along those lines, if it's, if it's the will of the community and the city council, of course, there's always that option. You know, as I said earlier, I really do support the goals and approach of this program. And while there are, of course, always a couple of cases that it becomes more difficult or otherwise, I do believe this program is a valuable asset to our protection of our local communities. And once again, want to be direct, if the council chooses to unenroll, I believe there is that option. And once again, I can provide that additional guidance. I don't believe that there's anything that would otherwise be permanent. We would, as a department, certainly ask a lot of questions to make sure there's not something that we can do to address any specific concerns on any individual properties. I guess I would caution in that kind of a condition, any others who did purchase those preferred rate policies in low-risk areas would also then no longer have that option available to them. So to make a, a long answer really short, yes, there's the option.
You know, this is, this issue, I'll, I'll hand off the gavel because I'm going to make an opinion statement. So if you choose to take the gavel, you can. Otherwise, you can just leave it where it's at, so. But this is one, this is one subject that comes to me on a regular basis, where I get calls from constituents concerned that we don't belong to this because either they're unable to buy the insurance, the Johnsons were here. You'll remember, they were here on two separate occasions. They would have been able to buy the flood insurance. They would, they would have been able to have coverage had we done that at that time. I brought that to the council to consider. At that time, we didn't participate. And this has been something, when, my first year I campaigned, I was out to fair, and a guy came up to me and he says, "Mr. Mayor, please get this done in Wilmer. We need to have this so we can have this optional insurance." And in hearing the numbers that we've been shared, if you're in a low-risk area, it doesn't cost you very much to get pretty good coverage. And so the opinion of myself is, is that this is something And so the opinion of myself is, is that this is something we need to do for our constituents. If, like you just said, Councilmember Fagerley, if we find out in, in two or three or four years that it's not working, we can work with our city attorney and get the ordinance repealed. But I think that this is definitely in the right interest of, of our constituents to, to adopt this. So I would speak very strongly in favor of adopting our participation. Now, if you want to give me the gavel back.
Okay, you can have it.
Audrey?
Yes. At your meeting, there were questions regarding grants that are available or might be available, if you're in the program or not in the program? And I know we did get an answer to that. I'm just curious, though, there's a Lake Owners Association, too, that's, you know, working on like shoreline and some of those types of things. Does participating in this program bring any resources to the community as far as the lakes, or is it strictly just the, the flooding that we are talking about here?
Unfortunately, in this case, in regards to additional grants or anything like that, our enrollment in the program does not bring about eligibility for any grants or anything like that. Specific to grants, there are a number of additional options available through other entities and other programs that are nonspecific to the National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
What would the committee like to do? You've got a few options, take it for information and get more information.
I'll make a motion to authorize a city administrator and attorney to pursue completing the necessary application for the National Flood Insurance Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was made and seconded to have the city attorney and city administrator work on the required documents. The only question I would have to the maker of the motion, would you want an ordinance prepared as well?
Wonderful, yes, please.
And the second?
Yes.
So complete the necessary paperwork and, and bring an ordinance for introduction and adoption for participation in the FEMA flood plan, flood program. Additional discussion, Councilmember Nelson.
I know there was a difference of opinion between staff at your meeting, and I think some of the questions have been answered with that, but I'm also curious if this needs to go before the planning commission? Does it have anything to do with our comprehensive plan or any other things that should be reviewed prior to our adoption?
Mr. Scotter, city attorney.
Mayor, members of the council, I think if this is going to be enacted in your zoning ordinance, it would definitely need to go to the planning commission. My belief is that most cities do enact their floodplain management ordinances as part of their zoning code. So tentatively, yes, I do think it would need to go to the planning commission.
Councilmember Mesky.
Some of the questions that we asked, I would like your answers for those at that time. In particular, for me, I'll just reiterate the question of those that are, that have a federal loan that is in, within that, that zone, if they're going to have to take on flood insurance, because that's one where there would not be a choice for the homeowner, and I want to address that. But for the rest of them, I'm, I'm fine with it.
And certainly in that case, Councilman, I would be able to try and get more information on that specific instance to provide to the council.
Thank you.
I think that would be some of the due diligence that staff and city attorneys would do to bring back for us a recommendation, just on where exactly it had to go and fit and all that, so. Additional discussion. No, this is a simple motion because it's directing staff to do something. All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Fagerley, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Councilmembers.
With that, that was the end of our meeting. I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
Was made and seconded to file the minutes for the community development for May 13th. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have Labor Relations Committee report of May 13th as well. Councilmember Mesky.
All right. In our meeting, we had several items to consider. The first one I'll take, and then I will hand off the rest of them to our human resource director. The first one was dealing with the interim city administrator search items. The committee basically narrowed down through motion, we set a target start date of June 11th for a six, minimum of a six-month period with a minimum of three days per week. We had talked about those here at the council, and we adopted those officially as, as the parameters. But the one piece for your consideration this evening is we did take the, the scope of the job, the interim administrator project list. You'll have a copy of that in your packet with a few of those pieces struck and a couple of them modified for the interim city administrator. Some of those that were struck, we thought those were going to be new planning ideas that a permanent city administrator should address, and some of those, we didn't feel they were not necessary for interim or couldn't be done in that timeframe. And so with that, this is what we would recommend, so I will entertain a motion to approve the interim administrator project list.
Second.
Was made and seconded to approve the interim city administrator project list. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a point of clarification, you had four motions in that one area. Are we not going to vote on the other motions?
I am only going with what I had here. We certainly can. We did those motions intentionally because we talked about them here at the council level, and we got the impression it was not what the council wanted, so we can certainly take them individually if you would like. But there is a motion for the project list first.
I'm fine with that. I think it would be helpful for us to have a record that the council actually voted on those motions.
No problem.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
All right. There is a motion for the interim to start on June 11th, and I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to have the interim city administrator start on June?
11th.
11th, on June 11th. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
There was also a motion for the city administrator to have a minimum of a six-month term limit, and I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to have a six-month, a minimum of six months for the interim city administrator. Discussion. All in favor, signify, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Then there was also a motion made that we set the work week at a three-day minimum level, and I'll introduce that.
Second.
Was made and seconded to have a three-day work week for the interim administrator who's starting on June 11th. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
And last, last comment I will say on that is, Councilmember Davis and I have agreed to serve on the hiring committee with our HR director for that hire in the very near future. Can we share how many applicants we have or, or how that process is going of gathering names?
We have, excuse me, we have at least seven applicants, probably a few more I haven't, I didn't check today, but we have at least seven applicants for that position.
Thank you. The next item, does anybody have any additional questions about? Okay, the next item is the consideration of vacation cash-out policy.
Our current vacation policy requires employees to take a consecutive 40-hour block of vacation time in order to cash out excess vacation hours. Included the policy in full on your second page of your packet. The new policy directly below it would allow them to cash out 40 vacation hours one time per calendar year, but only as long as they have used those 40 hours in the previous 12 months. So it removes the requirement that those vacation hours be taken consecutively and still allowing employees to cash out. So it still encourages them to use their vacation time before you can cash out any hours, and it makes it a little more streamlined for our, for our process. It will also remove employees requesting a vacation cash out ahead of time. There are some employees who are planning on taking a vacation later in the year, but they request a cash out now before it's been taken, and it's just cumbersome timeline-wise. So this will remove that as well.
I would move the approval of that policy.
Second.
Was made and seconded to approve the vacation cash-out policy. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, the old policy, I believe, had a requirement that they had to maintain a minimum of 40. This doesn't?
Correct, because they have to have at least 120 in their bank in order to cash out 40, so that would actually leave them with a minimum of 80 vacation hours.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, Councilmember Nelson.
I just have to ask this question because I was uncomfortable, I, I listened to it, but I was uncomfortable. So the, the amount of time that they need to take, there are no requirements to take any length of time, so somebody could take an hour a week and qualify for that 40 hours and then request 40?
Correct, if that's the way they wanted to, yeah, use their vacation time. Yeah, they could use one-hour increments. I believe that's the slow, the lowest increment that they can cash out is one hour, or, excuse me, use is one hour. So yes.
Okay. And I understand, I, I understand better about the amount that's left with that, but I, I'm a little uncomfortable that there isn't a requirement that someone needs to take a amount of time. Because vacation is really meant to take a break from work, not just a convenient timeframe, so. And I don't know if that applies across all the departments or not, but, and I don't know how many people are doing any of that, but just a concern that vacation should be used as vacation, not as cash, so.
Sure. It's, it's kind of up to what policy you want to set. I've seen companies, too, where anything over 80 you can cash out, and I'd have employees cash out every pay period. So it's just up to what you want the employees to be able to do in your policy and what you want them to use their vacation hours. If it's going to be their time to decide to do with what they want, or if you need want them to use it or lose it, it's kind of up to your company philosophy.
My understanding is, is that we would do a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding with the unions, is that correct?
That would have to happen in order for the union employees to use this, because that policy does state that exactly in their union contracts. So if they would like to change it to this requirement, we would have to do an MOU for them.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
The next item is the consideration of ASME unit compensation study.
So in 2018, Springstead conducted a survey for 32 of our city positions and offered a recommended salary structure for us to implement. In comparison with similar cities, Wilmer's pay scales for those positions are below the market average. Their pay ranges are anywhere from 12 to 19% below market rate. So along with the, the study, which is the first graph in your packet, they also, the three pay scales after that are possible recommendations that we could implement for our city pay scales. So option A is a new implementation based solely off of the market rate, just strictly compared to other cities' salary ranges. Option B shows those pay scales reduced to compensate for the fact that employees receive 100% of the family health insurance premium from the employer. And then option C further reduces that to also incorporate the employer's HSA contribution for the family enrollment. So one thing it doesn't take into account is that some employees are enrolled in the single plan. We do have at least one employee, I'll stab my head, I know, isn't enrolled in any plan. So the wages for those employees enrolled in single or no plan are obviously still going to be very far below market rate. So that's another thing to keep in mind when implementing new pay scales. It's a lot of information to digest, so the committee did recommend that we look at the study on the retreat date, the fifth Monday in July, July 29th. You have the full study now to review, see if you have any questions. I did also confirm with Springstead that they can come on July 29th to present to you, answer any more specific detailed budget questions as well. If you do have any other information you'd like them to provide, please pass that on to me, and I will make sure it's there for whatever date you decide to look at the study.
I'd move the recommendation of having Springstead present the results and recommendations at the council retreat, or mini-retreat on July 29th.
Second.
Was made and seconded to have Springstead come and share with us the compensation study results at our next mini-retreat. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm not sure if this, I'm, I'm fine with the July 29th, but I'm confused with the information that was in the packet, so that if I read the, the information that they sent, they did, they did the first document that we got, correct?
They did all of them.
They did all of them. So why did we jump from one category of employees, one group, to all employees?
Yes. So Springstead was also the company that conducted the salary survey back in 2016 for the supervisors, department heads, and non-represented employees. So I asked them to incorporate the new results into a citywide pay scale that would be compliant for pay equity as well.
Okay, so that's what you intend to use this document for, is pay equity?
Yes, so that, well, that is part of it, yes, it needs to be in compliance with that, too.
Okay.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Again, as you understand, the strategy of having it is that we obviously, from the past, know there's a lot of interest, and there should be, in this, in this particular issue, and we want the full council to look at this. So it seemed like a natural fit to be able to take it to that mini-retreat, and so I'm, I'm very glad to hear that Springstead would be able to go there, because I think we all need to be part of that conversation. The Labor Committee was not comfortable and would not be comfortable in moving a recommendation that would speak for the entire council on an issue as serious as this.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
There was a question earlier about whether the salary survey with the other communities was strictly salary or if it was benefits. So the second part of that question would be, just is it, and then do we have information about benefits available for those other communities also?
Okay. So that's a timeline issue. It was conducted in 2018 when we had a different employer contribution for premiums and HSA. So yes, it is a comparison of the other cities, their salaries and benefits included. However, we did have a significant change into 2019 with our benefits and our benefit contribution. So that is why the recommendations are offset by the change in our health insurance contribution. So yes, the market rate study, that first graph you have, was taking into account all benefits. It did survey for benefits as well, the other cities and their contribution. I can ask her to bring some of that information with on the 29th. She didn't include it in her report to me, but she did say that they do compare benefits as well, not just straight salary.
But the report we got is just salary?
Yes and no. It's, it's their salary and their, and can be modified to make sure that the benefit contribution is the same or at least similar. So they did look at benefits when they did this study. I can, I can ask specifically, I believe this is just, I can ask her specifically about how they incorporate the benefit part of it.
Because that would make a big change, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, because we're, we're not comparing apples with apples if we're from one spreadsheet to the next.
It's, it's hard because this is the 2018 stuff. 2018 apples to apples, this is the comparison. They did look at cities with a similar benefit contributions to what we have.
But then the next documents are 2019?
The next documents, the first one is if we wanted to go off of straight market rate and be similarly pay scaled to other cities. And then the second one and third one are reducing to account for the increased employer contribution to the family premium and the HSA.
Yeah. Councilmember Mesky.
I think that the front page is 2018 comparables. That is what it was. But 2019, obviously, was changes, so the next two pages are to take, to account those changes of, one is with the HSA, one is with the HSA and the insurance piece, because there aren't comparables, because we got that in 2018. And so what we can do is make sure that we can have comparables for the first page that take into account similar communities that have a similar benefit package. You can ask that.
Yes.
Obviously, that would be a whole new study otherwise, so we have, we have the numbers we have.
Yes.
What are we going to do if there isn't a community that has 100% health insurance coverage?
I can ask her how they incorporate the benefit differences into the study. I don't know if there's a formula or how they do that, but I can ask how they compensate for that, because that's obviously what they did to decrease our pay scales in B and C. because that's obviously what they did to decrease our pay scales in B and C. So, I'm assuming there is some formula they can use to incorporate that, because there is a dollar value assigned to whatever you're contributing for your health insurance.
Sure.
I cannot do that, but I can definitely ask her to.
Just some discussion. Councilmember Plowman?
I'll speak on behalf or in favor of the motion discussing this further at the retreat. After hearing the comments that we did during the open forum, I think it's important that I myself personally express the fact that we are sensitive, or I am sensitive to the nature of time. And the expression was given, kicking the can down the road. I don't believe that is the intention or the intent of council, but I think when making such decisions with information as comprehensive as this, to just make a quick decision addressing it would be very reactionary and probably unwise on our part. And I do understand that the gears of government seem to turn incredibly slowly, and the process can be arduous and frustrating at times. However, I do think that if we have a chance to sit down and discuss this as a body comprehensively with Springstead and with all the people at the table that need to be there, we can probably come up with a more equitable, well-rounded decision. And I think that it's going to be a more informed decision. And so, I guess I just want to express more than anything, our employees are valuable. We want them to feel valuable, and we want to be the employer of choice. And if things need to be modified, then so be it, but we cannot do that unless we do that in the proper manner. And so, with that, again, I would speak on behalf of the motion.
Just some discussion. Councilmember Mesky?
No discussion really, but if this motion does pass, if you have ideas or additional information that you would want for this, please get that to the HR director as soon as you can, so she can get that to Springstead, because we want to have all your questions answered at that retreat.
Just some discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. I just want to mention that, and I think it's important, that as council, this is two months out from tomorrow, so it's imperative that we have all council members in attendance at that meeting if possible. I think a lot of times, we have a lot of public meetings that happen where we're seeking input, and we don't have all the council members that show up. And then, they come to a public forum like this and speak in favor of something when they haven't been in attendance at the public meetings where the input has been received or given. So, I think it's important that all nine of us try to be there for that meeting. And I know that schedules are difficult to make that happen. Councilmember Mesky?
The last item for your consideration this evening is the consideration of our personnel policy updates. As we've done in the past, we told you these were coming. The next section of the policy handbook is now up for your consideration.
Just similar to what we did before, this is the second section. Everything in black is text exactly from the League of Minnesota Cities that their HR department created and their attorneys have reviewed. Everything in red, I pulled directly from our current personnel policy. So, those first three pages, our conflict of interest policy, that is the one currently in our personnel policy. And then, the whistleblower protections policy was also directly from the League of Minnesota Cities. And then, those pages after it are the sections of our current personnel policy that these would be replacing.
I would move their approval.
Second?
It was made in second to approve the updated personnel policies as presented by our HR director. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. That motion does carry.
And with that, I would move to approve the Labor Relation Committee meetings of May 13th.
Second?
Move to file the minutes?
Yes.
Motion made in second to file the minutes of the Labor Committee for May 13th. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next is Public Works Safety Committee Report of May 15th. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works, Public Safety Committee did meet this past Wednesday in the conference room at City Hall at 4:10 PM. We called to order. All members were in attendance, myself, Councilmember Osmus, Councilmember Nelson, and Councilmember Alvarado. We were there with our engineering, Public Works Director, our fire chief. And in attendance was Gary Manzer with Public Works, our superintendent. And also, our mayor was in attendance. We called to order. Our first item that we covered was from our statistics from our fire chief, Hanson, and they are listed right after the summary sheet. And following that, our city engineer presented the statistics. As Chief Felton was out of town, presented the public safety statistics from the police department for us to review. There were no notable items that stuck out at this time, but in reviewing those items, if there are any questions, I would give the council the opportunity to direct those to either chief at this time. There being no further questions on that item, we'll move to the next. And that was regarding a brine mixing station purchase. Staff brought forth for approval, purchase of a brine mixing station and storage tank for the Public Works garage. With the addition of liquid applicator tanks on snowplow trucks, staff solicited quotes for brine mixing station and storage tank to fill those trucks. Two quotes were received for the station, one from Veritec in the amount of $77,350, and one from Aspen Equipment in the amount of $60,300. Staff has chosen to proceed with the Aspen Equipment and also received a quote from them for a 3,000-gallon storage tank in the amount of $10,146. Council, well, the committee did make a motion and decided to pass this along for council's approval. Along with that, let's see, we're probably going to have to break this into two motions, or two resolutions, rather. The first motion was entered for that purchase of the tank itself, and I will enter that motion.
Second?
Motion made in second to approve the bid from Aspen Equipment and also to buy a 3,000-gallon storage tank along with that. Now, those dollar amounts do coincide with what is in the capital improvement plan. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman?
And in reading this, I maybe screwed this up a little bit, so I might just look for some direction from...
You're good.
Are we okay?
If you have to do the next one.
As a motion, as a separate motion? Okay. The motion was then made and seconded to pass this along, along with electrical work from Kim's Electric in the total amount of $72,300, and I will enter that motion now.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to have Kim's Electric do the required electrical work for an amount not to exceed $72,300. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that the correct amount, or is it 1,832?
No, the 1,832 was the electrical amount. What he did is he made a motion for the total amount, so he added the three numbers together, is what he did. It's a valid motion, I believe.
The first motion actually, if I may, the first motion actually, I kind of switched it up, pertained to the tank specifically, and then we're covering the full amount, because I saw the full amount was actually in the second paragraph. Sorry for the confusion on that.
So, this is all three pieces, what you're saying?
Correct. This is all three.
Just some discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes as well. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item, wastewater treatment plant tractor replacement. Staff brought forth for approval, purchase and replacement of a wastewater tractor. The wastewater department land applies over 4 million gallons of MPCA-approved biosolids to approximately 2,200 acres of farm fields with the tractor and honey wagon. The current 2009 John Deere 8330 is scheduled for replacement in accordance with the vehicle replacement program and is lacking horsepower for efficient application using the new honey wagon purchase that happened in 2016. State contract pricing was received from Haug Implement locally for 2019 John Deere 8345R in the amount of $214,744.27, which includes $100,000 trade-in value for the current tractor. Motion was made and seconded to send this to the council and for purchase, and I will enter that motion now.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to purchase a John Deere from Haug Implement in the amount of $214,744.27. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff brought forth for approval, the purchase of a portable pump for the wastewater department. They currently have six smaller pumps, which are only used for sanitary sewer emergency bypass events. A larger portable pump will assist in rainstorm flooding events in both sanitary and storm sewers and with the valve vaults in the newer lift stations. Quotes were solicited from Electric Pump in the amount of $67,287, and one from General Repair Service in the amount of $66,000. Comparing the two quotes, staff finds the one from Electric Pump has better capabilities with diverse pump control features. That pump will be more useful, usable in a wider variety of areas for the department. Therefore, a motion was made and seconded to purchase the portable pump from Electric Pump in the amount of $67,287, and I will make that motion now.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve purchasing the portable pump. Roll, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes as well. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six was a big item, because it addresses our street improvements. Staff brought forth for approval to declare costs to be assessed, adopt resolution of intent to reimburse on all 2019 improvement projects, order preparation of the assessment roll, and call for the assessment hearing on city projects number 1901-A, 1901-B, 1903-A, 1903-B, and 1903-C. Bids were opened on May 9th, and the amount received to perform the necessary improvements is known. Staff is preparing the assessable footage and the amount for each affected lot. Motion was made and seconded to declare costs to be assessed, adopt the resolution of intent to reimburse on all 2019 improvement projects, order preparation of the assessment roll, and call for assessment hearing on June 17th, 2019, for the projects that I listed previously, and I will enter that motion.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to adopt costs associated, costs to be assessed, order in preparation of the assessment role, calling hearing for assessment for projects numbers 1901-A, 1901-B, 1903-A, 1903-B, 1903-C, and 2019 street and other improvements. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Point of information, is this for a resolution to have a hearing only?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next item is regarding the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center pool resurfacing bids. Staff brought forth for approval...
Councilmember Plowman, you want to do your resolution for establishing procedure relating to compliance for reimbursement of bond regulations?
Boy, do I have that in here. Don't think it's in there. Yeah, it's not in here.
It's not in the minutes.
It's right here. Second one down there? This one, right there. All right, yeah. And then, the second one would be a resolution establishing procedures related to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code, and I would make that motion.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I will move on to the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center pool resurfacing bid. Staff brought forth information and for approval with the recommendation, a recommendation to reject the bids received for the Aquatic Center pool resurfacing project. The CIP currently includes $200,000 for the project, and we received two bids, one from Horizon Commercial Pool Supply in the amount of $349,400, and one from Global Specialty Contractors in the amount of $299,000. With the bids significantly higher than budgeted, staff is planning on amending the project and putting it out for a rebid with newer varied specifications as an alternate and to adjust the capital budget to accommodate for the increased expense. With that, a motion was made and seconded, and I will enter that motion now.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to reject all bids for the resurfacing of the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Pool for 2019. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. No. Staff did a good job explaining why we're at this point in time, and maybe Councilmember Plowman was going to ask for that comment, but I would ask that staff would review what the plans are. This is, I know this was on the agenda last year and got moved to this year, and so, we did have a discussion to make sure that it will be completed next year. And I think Mr. Christensen did a good job explaining that, and I would ask him to address that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, as mentioned in the minutes, we did solicit bids, and in the process of doing the design, doing the actual scope of this project, it was realized very few contractors do this exact type of project. That coupled with the fact that the few contractors that do it are booked about a year in advance, or a year out. And so, when we started receiving these bids, they were already saying they couldn't get to it until spring of 2020. We could, obviously, we could push it, and the prices would go up even higher. So, those comments, or those items coupled together, we decided that it best to re-scope the project slightly, maybe do an alternate for the pool decking and some other areas that may need some TLC, and rebid this project soon, like within the next couple of months, and get this project done next spring, right before the water is put in for the season.
Councilmember Mesky?
The nature of the problem with that pool, none of that will get exacerbated because of the timeframe going by?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mesky.
It won't get worse?
No. We've done some further evaluations on that. We're going to put some, what we, in the street world, we'd call just patches on some of the bad areas. If you looked below the surface of the water and where you're standing, you'll see the patches. And so, cosmetically, it won't look the best when the water's out of the pool. I don't think it'll be that noticeable. It will, it'll buy us the year we need to keep the pool open for the season.
Just some discussion. All in favor of the motion to reject all bids for the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center pool resurfacing for 2019, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Final item of discussion, and this is not going to be an action item tonight. Staff brought forth for information, a status update on the Cambridge Drainage Pond Project. The latest estimate from Boltland Mink on the project came in at $885,544.06, which is twice the original estimate of $444,448. Staff is looking for other design options within the engineering department, within the Boltland Mink staff. And before moving on any further from there, I will just mention that we... And, um, before moving on any further from there, I will just mention that we discussed this item as a committee at length. Uh, we had discussion with our city engineer, and we do, um, we do believe that our engineering department has a, has a plan of action regarding some alternatives from the original path that we had set forth, and, um, the, uh, the overall sentiment and level of optimism is high that, that we do have options in front of us, but it is gonna be a different, uh, different path than what we had originally gone. Timelines yet to be seen, but they are very aggressive, aggressively looking at what those options are. And, um, I think if we have questions as a body, now is the time to ask those of our engineering staff. And, uh, we do anticipate this will be coming back to Public Works again in the very near future, but, um, again, we can ask those questions if there are any at this time.
We also have, uh, represented from Bolton Mink here as well, so I think if there are questions, I think tonight would be a good time to ask those. Councilmember Plowman, I do have a few questions, if it's okay?
Absolutely.
First off, uh, this issue continues to be an issue that haunts us. And from what I've been told, this has been going on for at least 15 years. I know that last year that we did give approval to get it done, although we did not find a funding source for it. I would strongly encourage staff to work with the Public Works Committee and make this a high priority. And, uh, as I had stated at the committee, I feel it's imperative that we look at hiring these services out so that we can get them done this year. Uh, our staff is overwhelmed. They have, uh, again, many openings within their department and other openings within the Public Works Department that, uh, our city engineer has to work on filling those spots. And so it's not a question of does our staff want to do the work, or are they just being lollygags? They're not being lollygags. They're doing their work. It's just there's too much work for them to do. And, uh, I was certainly hoping when I left the meeting that day, because I had to get out to another meeting, that I would have seen a motion that you would be in, uh, looking at tonight, basically directing Bolton Mink to work with the engineer to get this done. You know, this is gonna put us off at least another two weeks, and, uh, you know, uh, if we would have had the rains that some parts of Minnesota had on Friday night and Saturday, we would be having a different conversation tonight. We'd be talking about that, that area flooded again. And, you know, one of the things that was mentioned by staff at that meeting was that we didn't have time to do it this year. I think Bolton Mink probably has the staff and only takes money. And, uh, certainly I hope that we can get this done. I know that the engineer is, uh, you know, I met with him. Uh, he is very encouraged by some additional options. But, um, I would certainly hope that next time this comes to us, that we'll be either looking at going east or going along the Highway 12 corridor. Um, you know, obviously, $885,000 is not a doable project, so those are my comments. I would certainly hope that we can fast-track this any way possible.
I think it perhaps was after you, um, left the meeting, but we did have a lengthy discussion with staff regarding that, and staff indicated they were already working with Bolton and Mink and that they would do that. I think we offered to staff also, if there was anything that they needed, to please let us know, and, um, that was the direction. That's where staff was going with that, and so I do think we will hear back soon. No, we did not take a motion, but the sentiment in the room was that this needs to be done and brought back for clarity as soon as possible. And, um, staff indicated that they were working on this and would be back with us, um, with that. And so I don't know if either one of them want to talk about that, or anybody else in the committee wants to, but, um, there was a sense of urgency and also a sense of urgency if there's something that can be done in the meantime to, if we do have another 100-year reign. So, um, but I'd look for other comments regarding this.
Point of clarification, Mayor. Um, I do believe, and I would ask on Jared Vogi or our city engineer, I do believe we are currently under contract with Bolton and Mink. I don't know if that contract has ended or expired, but would there need, would there need to be a new motion made to enter any additional or further contracts to continue working on the scope of this project?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, we are under contract to design this project with Bolton and Mink. I think at the most, we'd have to look at what the clauses are in there for, if they're not to exceed dollar amounts or whatever, but we could do it with a simple amendment pretty easily.
Okay, is there, as a follow-up, if I may, um, is there anything that a...
You're the chair.
All right, then. I may. Um, is there any motion that we could make that would speed this up tonight?
I don't think so. I could come to you with an amendment at the next committee meeting, with or without a motion, I suppose.
Okay, so in other words, I mean, it's moving along as fast as it can move along at this point?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, with that, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Committee. Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, consideration of introduction for a hearing for text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Dr. Ramston.
This is a very minor text amendment that was presented to the Planning Commission. It is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance 1060, section 6, and reads tattoo parlors. It is already a, a use that is allowed in the Central Business District and the Shopping Center District, and the only thing that's being added is also allowed in the General Business District. So it's a use that's already allowed in all the other, uh, commercial areas.
So you want, uh, you want a motion to set a public hearing for June 3rd? Correct? Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, Councilmember Osmus.
I was gonna make the motion. Sorry. I should have just died.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion to set a public hearing for text amendment on the zoning ordinance to allow tattoo parlors in the General Business District? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, the consideration of a council member appointment to the EDC Joint Powers Board. Uh, the Joint Powers Board currently has an opening for a council member, uh, or a representative of the city to serve on the EDC Joint Powers Board. Um, I brought this up to you at the last meeting, and so I would entertain someone who may be interested in that position, and this would be the same as we do during our organizational meeting, so it takes a motion and a second. If there's more than one name, uh, that's forwarded, then there would be a vote. Those votes will become public at the conclusion of the meeting. Is there anybody who wishes to serve in that capacity? Anybody want to nominate? Anybody? Councilmember Osmus.
I could do that. Somebody wants to nominate me.
I'll make a nomination for Julie Osmus to serve on the Economic Development Commission's Joint Powers Board.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Is there anybody else who wishes to serve in that position? Anybody else who wishes to serve in the position for the city Wilmer representative of the EDC Joint Powers Board? In third and final time, is there anybody else who wishes to serve on the EDC Joint Powers Board to be nominated? I would entertain a motion to cast a white ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to cast a white ballot. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, consideration of state temporary liquor permit. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my office received an application from the Canoe Way County Fair Association to apply for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for, to, then they have plans to sell alcohol during the Canoe Way County Fair, which is being held August 7th through the 10th of 2019. Staff's recommendation is to approve the permit.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a permit for Canoe Way County to be able to sell alcohol during the fair. Uh, this is, normally would be a simple motion, but it takes, it's a motion, but it takes a roll call because it has to deal with liquor. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That res, that role, that motion passes. Next, the consideration of state temporary liquor permit for Wilmer Fest Beach Party. Ms. Thompson.
Mayor and members of the council, my office also received a, uh, application for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license from Wilmer Fest, the, from the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club, and they have plans to purchase and sell alcohol during the Wilmer Fest Beach Party located at Robins Island on June 22nd, 2019, and it's staff's recommendation to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the temporary liquor permit for Wilmer Fest for their beach party. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next, city administrator comments. Mr. Holland.
Couple things tonight, Mayor and council. First, I want to congratulate Judy, our clerk, uh, on passing the Certified Municipal Clerk Program. It took, you know, three years and a lot of work, and, uh, her dedication has, uh, worked out. And so again, I want to congratulate her. I know I put that in the, uh, weekly briefing, but I just wanted to acknowledge her in front of everyone and make sure everyone was aware of her hard work, so. And she's continuing to work. She's ignoring me right now, but, uh, congratulations to her. Also, last week she helped with a successful auction down at the Public Works Department, and I want to give kudos to the Public Works Department. They do a great job, uh, every year down there. There's a lot of stuff down there. Our police department comes down, they help out, and the crowd, uh, didn't disappoint. We had good weather and, uh, we got rid of everything, so. There's still a few bits and pieces hanging behind, but they will be moved out shortly, so. It's amazing how much stuff, uh, the police department accumulates. And lastly, also with Public Works, I know many of you, I saw last year at the, uh, Public Works facility from four to six on Thursday. Uh, this is Public Works Week. I noticed on the news, uh, tonight, some of the cities in the, uh, St. Paul area were, uh, having similar events with their snow plows, and they've been painted this year. We're gonna have, uh, the vehicles on display. Uh, there will be some, uh, refreshments for the families when they come down, and some different things for the kids, uh, to, uh, look and learn. And so I encourage everyone, hopefully we'll have good weather. Sean has promised good weather, uh, for Thursday, right? Okay, so go on down this Thursday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. In the mayor's comments, uh, we have a need for a planning commission member. There's an opening on the planning commission, and, uh, I'm bringing that to the council. I'm looking for names for people to consider for that spot. So if you could get those to Janelle or myself, I'd appreciate it. Then I also want to just mention that, uh, on Thursday and Friday of this last week, I attended another meeting, the, the, the fifth meeting of the Minnesota Mayors Together Association. And, uh, this is a group of mayors that are meeting, uh, throughout the state of Minnesota. Their first meeting was in Bemidji, followed by one in, uh, Duluth, and then, as you recall, the one in Wilmer, and then Ortona, and then we were in Edina on Thursday and Friday. You know, what Minnesota Mayors Together is working on is how do we break down the divide between the metro and outstate Minnesota? And the conclusion, uh, after a lot of in-depth analysis is, is that it's kept alive simply by the, the news and a certain group of people who choose to continue to want to bring this up. And it's not really as big of a divide when you sit down and have a cup of coffee or a meal together and start talking about what some of your concerns are. Some of the areas of concern, uh, for the Minnesota Mayors Together are obviously workforce development. And workforce development, uh, captures a lot of different tools. Uh, it's daycare. It's, uh, uh, people to be able to actually take the jobs. Um, we were told on, uh, Thursday that there will be 300,000 jobs that have to be filled in the next decade. And coming up through the pipeline, we have less than 150,000 people coming through the pipeline. So without any new job creation, we're gonna be more than 150,000 people short to do the work that's currently being done today. And so that either means that people have to work longer, uh, past their expected retirement time, or we have to find something and do something different to bring new people in. Of course, the daycare issue that, that is happening across Wilmer and Canoe Way County, uh, close to 800 spots short in Canoe Way County. Uh, good news, the YMCA working with the city of Spicer to open up the daycare center, uh, in the Green Lake Mall, so that will, uh, help us take about 93 spots. And so when you take a look at all of this, uh, what do we have to do to create work? And I had the pleasure to sit by the mayor of Becker, and Becker is getting the Google Data Center, uh, if everything goes through. And, uh, they were asking, uh, uh, other mayors to come on board, other cities to come on board and support, uh, the Google Data Center in Becker. And, you know, when, when this originally was presented on Thursday evening, I was thinking, well, what, what good is gonna come from the Google Data Center for Wilmer? You know, I mean, it's, it's in Becker. They're not close to us. Uh, really, they're along the 94, uh, Highway 10 corridor. And really, what difference does it make to us if they have a Google, if they have a data center or not? Well, then I, I spent the evening thinking about that and just thinking, well, you know, why are you being so selfish? And why are you thinking of yourself only and only thinking of Wilmer? And I got to thinking, you know, right next to us here, we have the Minus Technology Campus. And if we can have Google come to Minnesota and they can hear about what's happening here in Wilmer, that could be good for us. And then I started thinking about, well, if good things are happening and we prove that these types of services can be offered in the northern climates, we can find a workforce to do the work, and all of a sudden, it became very important to, for Wilmer to support the Google Data Center. And the size of these buildings is just astronomical, and Google does things generally in three. So they'll come in, they'll build one data center, then they'll come in and build a second data center, and then a third data center. And some, some of the issues that they're, uh, addressed with is how do they get water to the site? How do they get stormwater? How do they, how do they handle their stormwater? And then how do they handle their sanitary? Now, their sanitary is not gonna be that much because it's only gonna be 50 jobs. So, I mean, so they're not talking about bringing in thousands of people. I mean, it's, 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 it's 50 jobs is what it is. And if they replicated this two additional times, like Becker's hoping they will, I mean, it's a total of 150 jobs thereabouts. But these are all, um, very, very high-paying jobs. Which then, um, caused me to think, um, I went to a ribbon cutting, uh, in downtown Wilmer of this high-tech, uh, business in Wilmer, uh, this new, uh, technology company, and I wish I'd have brought their card with so I could say who they are, but, um, but, uh, a great company that just opened up in downtown Wilmer. And they do, uh, high-end top, uh, internet services right here in downtown Wilmer. And I didn't even know they existed. And, uh, they've got, I think, like five or six employees, and, um, they actually will, will host your site. They do a lot of work for, uh, some of the casinos and some of the major companies in Wilmer. Uh, they all host their, their stuff on their, on their system. And I was talking to one of the, uh, people that, uh, have them, and they said that the gentleman that runs this particular department, you know, if he was out, uh, on, on, on the, on the west coast, uh, he would be one of the top guys for, for Google. And so, uh, Councilmember Davis is helping me, so thank you so much. So. It's called West Central Technologies is the name of the company, so thank you. So thank you, Councilmember Davis. She was there as well when we had her little tour, so. So very good work, very good things happening in Wilmer. A company I didn't even know existed, and they're doing very, very great work here, so. Then I just want to invite everybody to the EMS Open House tomorrow at Rice Hospital. That's tomorrow afternoon. I think this goes from 4:00 to 6:00. And then our, of course, like our city administrator said, the Public Works Open House is on Thursday. And isn't this also the week of Public Power Week? Aren't they this week, too? Do you know, Justin? Or is that next week?
I don't think it's this week.
Okay, sounds good, okay. And then just one item of concern, not to change anything that we did tonight, but the mayor is not included in any part of what you're doing with your search for your city administrator. And I'm not sure if that's intentional, but, you know, generally speaking, when you're looking at new city administrators, your mayor generally would have some involvement or did have an opportunity to give some input, and I did do that, but so it's for your interim city administrator, so the mayor is not included in your interview process or anything like that. So not sure why you're doing that, but the charter is very clear that the mayor is supposed to be involved in those things. And so it's interesting, and will probably become interesting to the community when this information gets out. So with that, I'll go to councilmember announcements. Councilmember Davis.
Well, I just want to say Friday night was the mayor's block party, and I got to try the new colony, is that how you say it?
Colony.
Colony bikes.
Colony.
Colony?
Colony.
And they're awesome. And the app is really cool, and they're going to be a great addition to our community.
Councilmember Arrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention about that 2040 program when we had on Thursday. We had a great speaker. It was 13 Ways to Destroy Your Community, and obviously, it's a pun on words. He touched on a lot of positive points, and I think we've got a lot going on in Wilmer. We're an example. We've got, one of the things that we have that we have to promote is our international community. When I ran for election, I talked about our international community and what that can bring to our community. It's an experience, and that's what we're hearing millennials want to do. They want to have an experience. The University of Minnesota is working with these businesses downtown to make them more appealing to the general public. Thank you for that. That's very exciting. And if we can get it so it's like a cruise ship, and somebody can come down to downtown and they feel, wow, this is, I saw this on a cruise ship, and this is how it feels, we're going to have more people in town than we know what to do with. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to promote our international community. Appreciate them, the university and the 2040 coming and teaching us all. That's just exciting stuff, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I just wanted to mention that last week, May 15th, was Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that we did have two officers, Officer Tim Wallace and Officer Sam Shafbauer, who were on the law enforcement memorial board with Lima, and that cap, Captain Chief, demoted him. Chief Jim Felton has been on the Lima board for many years, and I just want to say hats off to him and to the two officers that represented us down in St. Paul for the law enforcement vigil at the law enforcement memorial.
Councilmember Plowman.
Hey, New York Times, Star Tribune, and City Pages, and further and further, and all over the web, big news about Wilmer, and not just short little pieces, but in-depth, lengthy, good substantive conversations to have highlighting our community. And I just encourage anybody and everybody to extract all the good, you know, take some of the bad in stride, extract all the good, and harness it, and let's use it to energize what we're doing in the future.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Fagerly.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Mesky.
Pass.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Pass.
Okay, at this time, we will go into closed session, and I have a statement to read. The agenda for this portion of the regular meeting is to consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase of non-city-owned parcels of real property located on Block 25.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mayor, to interrupt. I think there was a disclosure the city administrator wanted to make first while we were in open session, before we get to the motion to close the meeting.
Yeah, I had, I had saw the email on that, but then I didn't see anything on any of my notes, so I thought maybe that had been pulled. So I wasn't aware of that, so. And then when he didn't say anything, I thought something changed that I wasn't advised about, so.
I noticed how he interrupted, but he said it was because of me. But anyway, I didn't interrupt you, Mayor. I just wanted to have full disclosure that Mr. Wodash is the owner of two of the parcels that we are discussing tonight on Block 25, and so I need to give full disclosure that he is a part-time employee of the city, but he does not have any influence on our decision to buy or not buy, or the price that we will offer, or any of those type of negotiations. It's not part of his duties, and so therefore, it should not be a conflict of interest to the city. But I wanted to give full disclosure on that tonight before we go into executive session. Thank you.
Okay. Then the agenda item is, let me back up, too, then. Councilmember Nelson has recused herself of all activities revolving around Block 25. She has done it with the utmost of integrity. She is to be commended for how she has handled herself through this process. It is not easy for her or her family to have to go through this type of process, and I just want to let the citizens of Wilmer know that every step along the way, she has kept me informed of every potential conflict that could have arisen out of this, so. And I know that she has received extensive counsel from our legal staff, along with her own legal staff, so I want to make that public as well. So this item on the agenda is to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05 Sub 3C to determine, consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real property. The agenda item for this portion of the regular meeting is to consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase of non-city-owned parcels of real property located on Block 25, parcels numbers 95-003-2620 through 2660. The legal basis of closing the meeting, this portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Section 13D.05 Sub 3C. There will be no council action following the completion of our discussion in closed session. The meeting will simply be opened and immediately adjourned. There will be no motions taken other than the motion to adjourn. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the meeting, and the time is 8:00. I'm sorry, the time is 9:00 PM.